Okay, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Workshop Meeting. The Mayor and Vice Mayor are both absent today, so in their absence, you're stuck with me. So, and I hope we have a good meeting, and thank everybody for coming. It's August 14th, and it's 11:41. First item on our agenda today is Old Business, Ordinance 19019, Amendment to the City Code pertaining to the Electrical Contractor License and Regulations in Buildings and Codes.
Motion for approval, second.
Motion for proper second.
Mr. Will Lance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Hey Melissa, can you call me now?
Mr. Wade?
I guess I'll be. It's unanimous.
That's fine, that's fine.
Thank you, Melissa.
I thought you were trying to tell us.
Moving along to other new business, we've got Resolution Title II, Resolution 19R20, State Industrial Access Program Grant Request through TDOT Transportation Department. Chris Griffin.
Thank you, Councilman Smotherman. This is the members of the council, this is a resolution of support for a state industrial access grant for economic development projects that are proposed along Warrior Drive near the Salem Highway Interchange. As it said, this is for two potential economic development projects that have not been announced as of yet, that's the code names that we're still using. This typical section funded by TDOT for these projects is two 12-foot lanes with four-foot wide gravel shoulders, additional design features such as a typical Murfreesboro, City of Murfreesboro Street that contains curb and gutter and sidewalks. They can be requested, but they are actually paid for by the applicant. We're working out the additional financing of that as far as the payment for the additional features, we'll bring that to you at a later date. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and then approval of this resolution so we can apply for this.
Mr. Green?
Second. Motion for proper second. Melissa, please, for approval.
Mr. Will Lance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Okay, workshop item, Capital Improvement Plan.
Aaron, I believe you've got some presentation to do.
Well, I'll give a little bit in.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. We'll turn it over to Aaron to do the real work. Just a couple of things. So the focus today is really on FY '20 and what we'll do, and what we're seeking is direction today, and what we'll do as far as financing for projects for FY '20. So if we can get the projects lined up, then we'll start to work on financing. The context, of course, is important as we make decisions, and that's what we've wanted to do for council. In the last few times when we've talked about CIP is to make sure the council understands the full context. So we have a five-year CIP that you've been provided, and then you had an update last council meeting, was it, last council meeting? We've got an update for that, and then one this morning. It's dynamic, and CIP is dynamic, so we'll keep adding to that and changing it, trying to update it, make it as accurate as possible to go. As we talked about before, it is for the next five years in the recommended projects number is quite a large number, $700, I think $780 million now. About $400 million of that is funded through state and federal funds or other previous financing, so that's at least quite a bit of money to come with alternatives, and we are working with alternatives and will bring those to you in short order to talk about the funding, or what we can do as far as moving projects or cutting down the CIP that's recommended over the next few years. But back to today, as Mr. Tucker will tell you, if we want to focus on 2020, one of the other things you'll notice up here for CIP, and some of the other communities do this, so it's, you know, it's not unusual, but to talk about our capital improvement program in the terms of really a community investment program, which is more along the lines of what it's, it's a bit more descriptive for the public, it helps them understand that really these are long-term investments by the city into the community. So we want to rebrand, so to speak, our CIP. Fortunately, it's the same acronym, and that's what most people use it, so it works out well. It's a community investment program as opposed to just a capital improvement program, or plan, I guess it is, although very, I think, overtime. So with that, I'll let Aaron walk through it. Happy to have an open discussion. Again, we'll focus on 2020, but everything's subject to discussion, but if we can get a direction through 2020, definitely very helpful.
Ms. Tucker?
Thank you. Okay, so as Craig said, y'all were presented with the preliminary five-year CIP at last month's workshop, and then I sent out the budget sheets this morning. Again, this information changes frequently as we get better estimates or bids and what have you. This CIP totals close to $780 million, and we have about $340 million previously funded through either federal and state grants, other grants, or previous financing. This plan presents potential debt funding of around $23.5 million in 2020, with another $300 million projected for '21 through '24. Note that we have future CIP items of close to $120 million. So these are items that we've talked about doing at some point, but they are not funded anywhere in this five-year plan, but would be funded sometime beyond that. So today, we'd like to go over the 2020 projects and get council's direction, and, you know, longer-term projects have been presented to you and should be considered, y'all can discuss at a policy level, but just understand that these projects are very tentative in nature and subject to change based on any community needs or economic conditions over the next couple of years. So just to kind of go over the departmental process, this year, we had departments submit their CIP projects during the FY '20 operating budget process, so that we could have a good understanding really of what sort of debt service we needed to plan for, for fiscal year '20 and beyond, and as we talked to y'all through the pro formas and everything else. We held departmental one-on-one meetings to go over the projects and see where they best fit within the five-year plan, and we also had a departmental group meeting with all department heads and the city manager, which gave an opportunity for all departments to really get a good idea of what's on the horizon citywide and not just for their own We mentioned before, it's important to understand the differences between operating and capital budgeting. The city's day-to-day operations are budgeted through the operating budget, which includes normal expenses like salaries, supplies, repair and maintenance, and things of that nature. The operating budget is generally funded by taxes and fees, and as y'all know, for FY '20, we do have a balanced operating budget. The other budgeting component is our capital budget, which funds the community investment This is funded by debt, or like I said before, the federal and state grants, or other grants, and have the Christie-Houston grant, things like that. The CIP directly affects the operating budget through the annual debt service of, and the general funds operating budget. And it's important to note that CIP projects may also have an indirect effect on our operating budget by increasing revenues through, you know, sales tax or property tax, or economic development projects that we may take on through the CIP. So when we look at the overall five-year CIP, as I'm sure y'all are not too surprised, roads make up about 67% of our total CIP, and recreation makes up around 12%, public safety 10%, schools 6%, and then everything else falls in the other 5%. This year, we took a little bit different approach and prioritized the projects, and I believe in your packet, you should have a summary of what those priorities, how those priorities are ranked. They range from a zero to three, and today, we're going to focus mainly on the zero and one priorities. Most priority zero items are items that we've already funded, or we have a contractual obligation to fund, or we've already borrowed money or received a grant for the projects. Priority one items are where a need was identified over the next one to two years, there's an economic development impact with a five-year or less cost recovery, and/or the project has been already partially funded by other sources. So when you look at our total CIP, 85% of priority zero projects are already funded. You can see that here in the blue bar. So these are projects we've already either had previous financing, or we've received grants for. Conversely, on the priority one projects, about 20% of these projects are already funded. When we look at the funding five prioritization, our zero, one level items are, they make up about 80% of our total CIP. So what we brought are the ones that are most significant and with the highest need. When you look at priority zero versus priority one level, roadways are still the largest expense there. On the zero items, it's 87%. On the level one items, it's 64%, with recreation making up another 21%, public safety 12%, and schools 3%. So this financing requirements table presented shows what the impact of each projected CIP would be on the annual debt service, and we assume 15 years at a 3% interest rate. So for the 2020 borrowing, you know, if we went with a $23.5 million borrowing at 3%, we'd project close to a $2 million debt service impact. Then I'm just going to go over the major projects for 2020. We can talk about any of the projects on the list, but this makes up the majority of what's in the 2020 CIP. So to start with, under parks and rec, we have the Segal Innovations, and that's a $13 million project, and that's part of our agreement with TSSA to make improvements to the Segal Soccer Park. We have about $4.7, $4.5 million roughly, in previous borrowings that we can apply to that, with an additional $5.2 million in 2020, and an additional $3 million in '21. And, you know, as y'all remember, this project is anticipated to be supported by the projected tax revenues generated by the tourism and related enhancements. We also have the West Side Parks, which is, you know, we took this and combined the two properties for Franklin Road and then the Burton Knob Veterans into one project initiative. So in total, this is a $58 million project, and we have about $9.2 million in previous funding.
Is that the buy of the land? Is that the buy of the land?
Both part of it is that, yes.
Biggest part?
Yes. And so for 2020 CIP, we have about $800,000 in there for planning and starting on the design, and then additional funding's included in future CIPs, but the majority of the cost of construction is beyond the five-year timeframe. We also have the Greenway North Connector Project, which is a $3 million project to connect the Greenway to Richard Segal Park and extend the trail to Walter Hill Park. Design for this is ongoing, and the construction funding of $1,080,000 is requested for 2020, and $1,540,000 for '21. In transportation, we have the Cherry Lane Phase Two Project, which was estimated about $17 million, and includes widening Cherry Lane to a five-lane road with curb, gutter, and sidewalks. Previous funding of about $1,000,000 and a quarter will fund the design and environmental clearances, and the 2020 CIP includes $2 million with the remaining funding coming out of the '21 and '22 CIPs. And right now, engineering's working on the environmental phase on that project. Then we have the River Rock BZ Road Bridge, which is an $8.5 million project to construct a bridge over Stones River near Old Racket Club Drive for economic development opportunity. This will also include intersection improvements at Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway. Robert Rose is a $2.1 million project to construct turn lanes, to improve traffic conditions at the intersection of Robert Rose and Thompson Lane. We've already borrowed about $1,006,000 for this project and need an additional $500,000 to complete. Warrior Drive is a $5 million project for economic development opportunities related to the River Rock BZ Road Bridge area as well. This will build a three-lane road extension from Warrior Drive to BZ Road, and we expect $2 million in state cost sharing on this project with within $3 million coming out of the 2020 CIP. We have the transit facility, which we've been working on for several years, and that's a federal and state joint project to construct a new facility forever. We have previous borrowings, just around $325,000, with close to about $1,000,000 and a half in the 2020 CIP, and an additional $2 million in the '21. For schools, student Chromebooks were requested for '20 and '21, where we can provide the Chromebooks to students at a two-to-one ratio. Those are at a cost of about $270 a piece, and then in addition, we have 900 new teacher and other certified staff computers, $450,000 in the '20 CIP, and another $450,000 in the '21. And then lastly, fire and rescue has a comfort apparatus replacement scheduled at a cost of $700,000 in the 2020. That's the major projects under the 2020. Like I said, we're happy to talk about any of these, or any of the smaller projects, or if y'all want to look at any of the other years.
Question right into West Park. I think that number was $800,000 for engineering and design, is what we're talking about. Probably given the discussion we had about all potential opportunities outside, what design work are we talking about specifically to that? I mean, is it something that would be duplicating effort, if you were to change, or on and out, keeping all or a part of specifically that?
Part of the redesign, Nate's here, you can speak closer to this, but I think part of that redesign work is to accommodate.
Would you like it flapper or softer?
How did I forget?
That's scary.
To accommodate that property going commercial, so it's sort of redesigning that for that purpose. That wouldn't be you.
What's going on here?
That was Facebook.
So the school's funding for the computers, is that out of CIP?
Well, they requested it out of CIP, they requested about 2.1, we've worked very hard with them to get that down to a number. They put it in CIP, we talked to them about that it really needs to convert to operating. What happened is, I don't know, with CIP, they're operating about five years ago, they used it.
CIP?
No, CIP, they used it to buy teachers' computers, and then they didn't budget for any more, and now those computers are done, and now we need to come back. And so the student computers are new because they're doing online testing and things like that, so they're kind of matching what the county's doing as far as computers now. In our city's classrooms, and so we've kind of meshed those programs together to come up with a much more decent number than what they had before, but, oh, CIP, so now we're at a point now where they have to replace all the computers, so to keep it out of the operating budget. The request was issued to put it in CIP, but we've talked to them that they really need to have an operating budget to structure replacement costs as we go along for computers. So that's.
So is that money coming from, you know, our bond market in CIP, or how we think?
We've done it before with the short-term line, when we did the first time, I guess it was five or six years ago.
Yeah, we had a short-term loan through the pool and advertised it over five years.
Well, five years ago, it's $5.26 million, if I remember correctly, and so it was a pretty significant amount, and.
But we did get them all at once that time. We didn't split it over two.
And so what we're doing now is looking at, instead of doing everything all at once, doing it over to your face, and then like Craig said, having them start incorporating that into their operating budget with a routine replacement schedule, much like how our IT department is funding our computer replacement schedule.
My thought is, if we're not doing it with bond market money, can we go ahead and get this, because the computers are probably needed at the first of the school year, and I think we're probably talking, if it's going to the bond market before we have the monies to buy the computers, we may be halfway through the, most of the school year done before they could actually get them in the classroom. Is there a way we can get them in the classroom quicker?
I guess we could go and look at funding it out of cash, and then refunding from whatever borrowing we do. You know, I guess the question would be, and we talked to them yesterday about what the real need is, obviously, they have computers now, they're operating now, and in a broad sense, they're out of, they hit their life cycle, but like other things, you know, they're making a life cycle, but you can still use them for a period of time, and so I guess we could accommodate some purchases out of that until we go out and arrange for the financing on the right schedule.
And use that, use our money?
To repay.
To repay ourselves.
Repay ourselves. We can take a look at that. I probably want them to go back and identify exactly how many they want, and we just start catching up.
Yeah, I think we need to look at need, because when you look at overall pre, which probably had all new computers two years ago, and then we've got Salem opening it this year, which I'm assuming has all new computers, then some of the cost would have been probably diverted, because we wouldn't be needing it all. Obviously, those schools don't need technology needs, hopefully today, or very much technology need. So I guess there's the assumption that, you know, it'll probably be based on need.
Well, the request was based on the situation as it exists, it's not based on replacing the equipment. I would think that their request was based on what their needs were at that point.
I think the request is to replace all the computers, and I think that's a legitimate request, because to justify from a CIP standpoint, if we were to go down and actually get into the level of what we're going to buy with cash right now, then we'd need to get a lot more assessment to the actual, what is the need. So I think from a CIP high-level standpoint, you know, that's what we're talking about here on what we'd be funding for computers, you know, we can work that out, you know. And if we are going to cash out, do you need, do you really need, I forget the numbers, do you need the numbers you need, can you get by with this number before we go out there financing sometime? So then we get a lot more into the operating, this is why it's really an operational budget, not a CIP, for exactly these reasons. But we can go back to school, we can work with them, you know, I probably wouldn't want to fund out the entire amount, I'd probably dig closer into the operational needs before we run them a check until we can finance the rest of it.
One of the other options is you could decide whether or not you want to keep variable rate debt in the mix, and if so, this would be something that's short-term and would be a good, you know, make you feel that, I think.
So what type of money does the school have in their operating budget?
For computers?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer yet. Thanks, somebody, Mr. Anderson or somebody?
As far as, when we bought the computers all at one time, just because we didn't have them, and so that's the reason we had none of them. As a matter of fact, when we opened Salem, we didn't purchase computers, because we didn't have the funding for that. What we did is we collected the computers that were operational across the district, and that's what we've done this year, we've spread them. So we're at about seven computers per classroom right now, and so it was purchase of, I think, is there any here? So with computers, when we purchased them, y'all remember, this was when it was in 2014, we didn't have computers, and so that's the reason they were all purchased at one time. There was discussion of spreading them over the years, but because we didn't have them, then we purchased it at one time. What we're looking at now is, since we have them, can we go ahead and purchase what we need, which would basically be purchasing and spreading between this year and next year? It would be nice if we could purchase them all right now, but I understand if we can't, but then getting it so that we would replenish every year since we have them. Initially, we couldn't do that because we just didn't have them. We did not, the computer, the technology that we purchased is typically in the capital outlay, and as far as purchasing per Salem, we didn't. What we have done this year is we have collected again, and taken an inventory of what we have that's working, and we've spread them across the district, so that's why we're needing them now. I'm comfortable with our purchasing now, part of them and part of them next year. It would be ideal if we could purchase them now, but I understand that if we can't do that, but we do need them this year and next year because they're at the point now that they're about six years old, and so they're just not going to last.
That's good information. I know as technology seems to improve, prices of technology seems to drop. I say that, and every time I look at a cell phone, the price of it's gone up, but is, are the prices pretty comparable today as far as per computer as we saw five years ago, or is there a significant increase?
What we're seeing, what we're asking for is, I think, significantly less, because the Chromebooks are less than the laptops, and we're comfortable with the Chromebooks. And as you might imagine, now the teacher computers, still, we're looking at laptops, but our teachers use their laptops, so we have very few desktops in the district. Typically, it's only going to be with their attendance folks, because what happens, if you've been in our schools, you'll see the teachers with their laptops, meeting with other teachers, and so they use them on a regular basis and carry them with them when they're teaching. We don't want teachers sitting at the desk. So the laptops have been really beneficial to us, and we realize what we're asking with that, but we're just at the point right now where the computers we have are obviously dying with that.
Well, my comment is that, is if we're going to buy them, let's get them to the classroom as quickly. If we're sitting at the seven-to-one ratio now, and the goal is the two-to-one, then whatever we can afford this year, realistically, let's don't, I mean, some way to make the dollars work to get the computers in the classroom as early in the year, school year as possible, so that as much benefit, because so much of education today is related to the computer, so, you know, I just, there's some way to make it work financially for us to, you know, find the money to be able to help get that percentage from seven to one to closer to two.
Just to make sure I'm clear on this, there's seven per classroom, so that's more like three-to-one, or?
You're looking at 20, anywhere from 20, well, some 19, but mostly 20, 22, 23.
So basically, I asked three-to-one, so we're. So basically I asked three to one. So we're, the goal is to have ten per classroom. We have seven.
Yeah, well, the goal, my goal would be to go one to one, but I know we can't do that. But I, and, and I, and I would agree with you, Mr. Shackler. As soon as we can get them, we can get them. But also realistic about what the council is working to, so.
So obviously with, with classrooms, you're not sitting on the computer all day long. Are, do we really have ten in each room or are there some rooms where we have twenty in the room? And everybody does four hours worth of work and other, have does P E in other classes that don't require computers? Or are we really sharing them on two, three to one relationship right now?
Really, really and truly what you're seeing is you're seeing in, in some of our schools where the, the schools, if they're title schools, then they have money coming in that way or the parents. You're seeing that they, they have purchased additional Chromebooks. We are using them pretty much constantly. Um, when you look at, at what we're required to do as far as teaching, you'll have two huge blocks of time. And then you'll have your, you'll have your special areas too. But with us moving to really more of an engineering focus, so the students are actually researching on computers. Also our, our, our reading curriculum, a lot of it now is on the computer and our science is on, on the computer. So it's certainly a lot more than what we were seeing five, 10 years ago. And that's what, and that's what we want because we don't want them to sit idle. And that's the reason we haven't gone to, some school districts still have the old carts where you have 10 computers on a cart. But that's kind of real, unrealistic because they might upset in the hallway. So if we're going to have the, if we're going to have the devices, then they need to be used because there's money being spent for those devices. And also the real world that we know those children will be facing in 30 years when they're out, they're out there working, that they're, they're going to be working with technology.
So is it, the way that we, that we look at the numbers of the two to one, do we basically just say, okay, this school has 600 kids. We need to have 300 computers for that school. I mean, is that, I guess to your question is, yeah, instead of saying necessarily, well, this class is a class where we're going to use the computer. So we want two to one there and this class is P E. They're not using computers in that class. It's just kind of taking it that we're going by 300 for that school.
That's right. And you're looking at classrooms. The advantage of the laptops too is initially when we bought the computers, we also had our resource rooms, which obviously we have quite a few of those where there's special needs students. It's important for them to have them too. Uh, depending on how many we purchase, our students with the laptops can carry them to those rooms and use them there. We see some of that too. And we, and we see them carrying them to our rooms or, or other places too. So it's a, um, if, if we're going to purchase something in the district, then it needs to be used.
Are we going to sell the old ones?
They probably, we can look at that. They're probably not worth, I mean, they're, it's, it's something we get information all the time with people that are wanting to buy them. I don't know realistically, Mr. Anderson, whether we've ever even seriously pursued that because typically we use them till they, till they die.
Would we keep the old ones? I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm learning here. This is great information. I mean, it's knowledge wise.
Sometimes it gets to a point where they're, they can't handle the new software.
Yeah, that's why.
And they're just, they're not supported and it's, you get, it's a dead machine.
And, and.
Three and ready.
Yeah. And, and I can see if we're, you know, if we're going to watch the next year, like with the K ones, I can see a shift in some down if they're still workable too.
Yeah, to do that.
Sitting there like using.
I still get anything. I still got like an iPhone four.
How much of, Dr. Gilbert, how much of the curriculum is built around the computer use? And how much is not being built around the curriculum use because of the ratio?
Um, oh, okay. Well, what we're seeing our teachers do right now is, is work together to, there's some things that have to be done. A question had to be done, like we have to have a benchmark testing that they're going through right now. So our math benchmark testing, our reading benchmark testing are all done on computer and those are all, all grades. Um, our science curriculum is online, so we access that online. But the way that we're approaching, and I think most of you all know, the, the reading curriculum, a lot of it's online now. Um, but the way we're approaching education in office versus city, if you've been in our schools and you've heard us talk about STEAM, it's a problem-based approach. So it, it is no longer the, here's your textbook and, and here's the information. But it is looking at the standards and we found this to be really productive. But looking at the standards that need to be taught and then having the students, having, the teachers will go in and they'll find articles. And a lot of those are online that they'll, online that they'll be using. But also having those students research problems. For example, we had, um, the National Zoo came in and presented one of our third grade classes with what their dimensions were going to be for a tiger. So those students took that information and then started researching on their computers about what that should look like and all the, all the different dynamics. So, um, I know when, back to Mr. Smother's question, it's, it's really changed a whole lot. Um, and we're seeing more and more of the online use, but that teacher being there facilitating it so that it's not just that. Now, we do have programs like Read 180 and what's called Lexia. There's another program too that are on what are called online blending learning where the students learn at their own pace. And, but that's typically to catch up those students that might have gaps and holes that you're going to see that used more. So it's really kind of all over the place. I know this is kind of an all over the place answer, but it, it really is going to depend on what, what we're looking at.
And how do we figure based on the serendipities relating to that ratio in our, our cities and counties? Putting more emphasis on that, less emphasis on that?
Well, you're, you're seeing more and more counties putting more emphasis on it. Initially, I think there was a real push because of the online testing. And we were told that there was going to be that online testing that was the Tim Ready test. Now what we're seeing is the online testing, that's the benchmark testing. Um, Rutherford is, is two to one. They're moving to two to one. They already are two to one now with their Middleland High Schools and moving two to one with their elementary. Uh, Franklin is one to one with their third, I believe it's third grade up and two to one below that. So if, if we can get what we've asked for, then, then, then we'll be, we're okay. So that, I guess I'm here to tell you, yes, yes, we need the computers. Yes, we need them now. But I also understand what, what you all are working with. And, um, so we're just, we're just glad that you're looking at it.
Really, let me, I'll pass this around. I don't want to chase this rabbit because I know we've got things to do. But there was a, a, a release of information last night that had been bargained about our school district. That some news presented to the board last night. That our school district received an exemplary district status. And nine of our schools were, received the, uh, a reward, our designated rewards. So, uh, whatever we give them, they seem to be doing a pretty good job with stuff that we have. And this is the first time, this many schools have been recognized as that?
Right. We, we, we're happy typically a school district with their diversity. You're happy if you get any rewards schools or certainly get, you know, a two or three, it's been pretty phenomenal. It's a lot of, a lot of good stuff happening.
And the highest rating in math and reading?
Level five math, level five.
Uh, level five math and the level five in reading and all that.
That's right.
So that's, that's pretty exceptional. So anyway.
Well, we, we couldn't do it without your support. So really, really appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
So Craig, back to our sort of bigger, bigger stuff. Thank you.
Now, Dr. Gilbert, I, I just want to say thank you for, I, I maybe during service meeting the other days, you know? And, and the enthusiasm of those teachers was, it was contagious. I mean, the excitement of going back to school. It was over the top and so thank you for everything the schools are doing. And, and you can tell that if they carried that enthusiasm into the classrooms, which I'm sure they did. I'm sure there were a lot of excited students this past week or so, so.
It's pretty cool to watch. Well, thank you very much for that.
Can I make one more step for you? Uh, and I know we're talking, in, in the same time, we're talking about the ratio of computers to, to users. We're also talking about who pays for it and what pot it comes out of. Um, is there a particular reason where we have chosen the path of let's replace them all at one time until they're dead? Rather than a 20% replacement on a yearly basis or basis?
That's what we recommended is the, is the replacement every time. We, we got, as, as Dr. Gilbert said, I mean, we got kind of stuck in that because everything was bought at once because they didn't have anything.
True.
And then there wasn't a paying place to do that. Now we're at a point where we're doing it again. So our recommendation is to, is to build in, just like the city does in most of the projects.
So is this 1.3 million dollars going to be in our C I P or are we deciding that? I'm just?
Right, yes.
Yep. All right. And you think because of having to replace so many at once at this time, still going to do kind of a C I P type of borrowing from this one? And then the 20% will start to happen more on an operating basis going forward? Is that the idea?
Yeah. That's the idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question related to Warrior Drive and economic development piece of that. Um, those road projects recommended for 2020 for C I P are labeled economic development specifically. Those in that highway, 99 corridor, are we saying economic development because we're saying we've got a opportunity that we're not talking about, that we haven't announced, that's going to be directly impacted by that? Or are we saying, oh, build a road and then it's going to create economic, just from opportunity?
So first, there are projects, there'll be additional projects that come in, probably drawn by these other projects. But there are right now at least three large projects that we're working on now that aren't available to be announced by the request of who's coming in. They're really driving those road developments right now.
So similar to Sazerac and that Cherry Lane issue where we partnered with an economic development opportunity. So we, we decided to push, advance that forward from this thing.
These are more than just our portion of the development. There's going to be some recovery of, of those dollars from projects.
Right, yeah. There, well, obviously the property tax revenues is that property is, is greenfield now. So it all gets developed. There'll be increases in property taxes. There'll be pilot programs on that will incentivize those over the years. But over a period of time, the payback is five years on those. Yeah, or the, so the pilots, fighters on those. And so, uh, we'll recover those as they develop and make investments in improving that land. Um, and then some will bring sales tax dollars, substantial sales tax dollars that will, um, help offset the cost that we, we would invest out there.
Sales tax dollars and job opportunities for, for local citizens, which is great. And, and I know several people contacted, I'm sure all of us in the last week wanting to know what's coming. And, and of course I've tried to explain to several people that, uh, it's, it's not that we want to be secret about it. It's the fact that some of these companies may be in other states where they have employees who aren't ready to announce to their employees until they know that they've got the deal closed in Murfreesboro. So, so there's just respect of, uh, trying to negotiate the deal that is in play here. So it's, it's not a deal, not trying to be transparent because we're giving out as much information as we can. Uh, but there's, uh, things that we can't say because of obviously the respect for the person who's doing the development. Uh, it's just not ready to make those announcements yet.
Exactly right. And that's quite common in large economic development projects. Thank you.
Any other questions? The, the parks perspective of what we're looking at in the budget here is, I know we use the term that we're kind of looking at the both park locations under one umbrella. Is, is that, uh, are we, are we really looking at developing two properties with this money? Or are we really looking at developing primarily one property with a small emphasis of park on the other property? Uh, with more of an industrial park development site, maybe on the potential of recovering money from that development in order to help pay for these parks? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, the eight forty Veterans property, really the highest and best use for that were in a three-way is for commercial development. Um, but recognizing that, we've talked to the community about a park having a, more of a community park. You know, it's still large, but 160 acres. Um, that park was initially planned kind of tentatively with ball fields and big development on it. Um, so when we looked at the 96 land, which has less commercial opportunity for it, for the development over there, um, those ball fields, instead of shifting over to that, which is only, I think it's three miles away, it's five and a drive, uh, shifting those over to that site and leaving the community development on the eight forty, uh, or community park, the eight forty Veterans, seems like a better use of the city's land and the city's investment.
So the 800,000 is basically studies, engineering, planning?
Um, y'all good on that? I mean, I, like, I think it's important, man, is what we're talking about with that money essentially just kind of asking staff, the Parks Rec staff to kind of go out there and start putting together some ideas based on, based on these questions and, and see what's possible with that in mind.
Pretty closely with, um, neighborhood standards here, Kimley Ward.
Kimley Ward.
So we had a significant amount of planning done for our North Veterans location. So some of those funds would be used to parlay the plans that we've already built the place and some of the planning that's gone into some of the ball fields and the regional park aspect. See how that could fit into 160 acres off of Highway 96. While also planning for a lifetime line in the future, including some of the community park at our North Veterans.
So I'm going to make a statement that, you know, I mean, just, we've been through, uh, you know, a, a lot of input sessions from the, from the citizens. I mean, you know, it seems to me, I, I would just say, I wouldn't want us to spend a whole lot more time and resources and energy because we've done a lot of that already. And I don't want to make that a redundant thing. What we need to do now is go out and take that data that we've gotten, that input from them and kind of, okay, we've got these two pieces of property. Let's go do this and make sure it's the most efficient way to build it financially and all that kind of stuff. Is that plan?
That's the plan. Um, as far as what we've already planned out and had programmed at Burton Hawk Veterans. We're looking at seeing how we can use the plans that have already been created and the amenities at the Highway 96.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
But also adding into the caveat of the, of the new community park aspect of Burton Hawk Veterans.
Okay. Have we done any improvements to that Burton Hawk front? We have done anything as far as the drainage and all of it?
No, no, I don't think, we haven't turned any of the rubber, the grasses, but.
Um, so if I, I'm going to change gears real quick unless anybody's got some more on that. I just wanted to make sure kind of, um, the way that this, I'm looking through this spreadsheet and we've kind of got the, you know, we've got the 2020 column and we've got the 2021 column. And so it's probably, I could probably go through and figure this out, but maybe you've already got it to where I don't have to go through and add it all up. But with, with what we're borrowing, with what we've got on this list, so to speak, in this, in this, um, piece of information here, what kind of tail, you know, are there, it doesn't look like there's a whole lot in terms of, of tail money, you know, for 2021, kind of already spoken for in 2021? I mean, I guess, you know, because we always had that issue of, you know, we get these things started and then we've got all of a sudden this big commitment that's the next year that's already fulfilling. You know, we've, we've got 20 million borrowing this year, but it leads to 50 million borrowing next year that's automatic.
Right. That's why we, that's why we wanted to give a five-year projection so you could really see how that, the total project cost.
I just couldn't see it in, yeah, I guess.
Again, on the C I P summary tab, what probably be your best spot?
Yeah, that's where I am.
And so you've got, now I've got it pulled up here on the screen. I'm sorry, it's.
Oh, wait.
So.
Yeah, that's where I am, right there. So it's got all the 2021 funding on there, but it doesn't necessarily, I, I couldn't find where it necessarily says that it's a, you know, what we were calling that tail number.
Yeah.
Which was the committed, based on if you borrow this in 2020, you're now committed to this, not, not all the possibilities. It doesn't seem like there's much of that, but.
There isn't much of that. And really what we'd like to do is to fully fund a project before it starts. And so we're not taking up financing later. That's not always possible. Sometimes it makes more sense to do that, particularly if you can segment out. And so if you build part of it.
While you're constructing.
And the economy changes, you just stop and you're okay. You've got a useful segment that you've done and then come back and you can do it. Roads aren't always as linear as that. So sometimes you do have to build roads at, but usually you can figure out where a road will stop and.
You can kind of do a park in three phases and two thirds of it gets done and it's a good stopping point. You can't build two thirds of a roadway and say we're done. So.
So, so we're trying to avoid doing the financing, like you talked about, we just, we have no, you know, choice at all. If at all possible, avoiding those kinds of situations.
So do you know, I'm sorry, do you, did you know, Aaron, do you happen to know what that number kind of is? And I guess all I'm know, all I know to do is to go through here and look at the, where you have comments like in the transit facility with an additional 2 million in the 2021 C I P. You know, that, obviously if we spend the million and a half plus all the 14 million from federal and state, we're, we're on the hook for the 2 million that's left over in, in 2021, right?
Well, yeah. And sometimes what you'll see in the Parks's example is 800,000, I mean, it's going for, for planning purposes. So then the next phase would be construction financing if you, if you choose to do it.
Yeah, it's not necessarily committed though because we don't know what we elect, right?
So when you get into the state funding or federal funding a project, sometimes you, you will get in the situation where you have to do multiple borrowings over a period of time to finish out a project.
Um, Aaron, do we have the tab?
But you're always hoping that additional funding comes in, sorry.
No, it's good. This priority sheet where we've got in largest to smallest order for 20?
For 20 in what, by priority? For 2020, in what, by priority?
Well, I was trying to think, I think that's where you could ask. So, for example, the tail, the biggest piece of that's Cherry Lane, is 6.7 for 21, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, and I can't read it, it's a little too small. On this.
It's hard to...
Gotta get you some air around. It's got the hard words, yeah, I can see that on there.
Yeah, it is hard to say again on here.
But it's like, for example, the two biggest, because it's lending in highest to lowest, so in 2020, we've got 3 million for Segal, for 21, that's the table, and then 6.7 for Cherry Lane, and then 2 million for the 302, so those are the big numbers, 21.
In those roadway projects, you'll see that, and I think Jim's out, and Chris can kind of explain how that really has to work from a, from a funding standpoint.
He's looking at it from, you know, they've got all at Orkland Environmental, they have to do, where, you know, if there's wetlands involved and all that stuff, and if you're dragging it out over years, you hate to borrow for the whole project, and be paying interest on it, and then it stall out.
Right, what you're doing.
Yeah, so that's a big reason, I think, with the roads, why we do it in those phases like that, and then once construction gets done.
I'm cool with doing it, I'm just curious what the number looks like, just for clarification.
So what you really don't want to do is a building, so you don't want to start a building and then finance the rest of it the next year, and...
Because you can't, you can't.
Yeah.
Unless you know, you know, okay, we're borrowing for some engineering. Yeah, if you, if you wanted to look at an architect or engineer like this, I would just say, so you could get the quote, yeah.
Soft costs, and you could do soft costs upfront, and then you're hard costs.
Okay, cool, thank you.
And sometimes when roads, we do right away, too.
It looks, yeah.
Because that can take a long process.
There's a lot of components to roads that look like, which are big numbers.
And it's almost very spiraling construction cost, because three years from now, the project may be completely different cost than what we would propose it being today, so if you borrowed the money today, you may not even have enough when you get down to it.
Probably won't.
And we've put a lot of thought into really being a better project, so keeping this up to date. And one of the situations we got into is that we estimated a project and then started for three or four years, and then went into it, without updating really a whole lot of information about what it truly cost at that point in time, so everybody had in their mind the old number that was four years old, and, you know, it's 50% more, like construction costs. So if we do a five-year rolling scale, you know, and this, always updating those costs, hopefully we avoid that type of situation.
And I don't think anything exemplifies the basic philosophy of construction cost increasing more than what the schools just did, because, I mean, you built one two, three years ago, you build one today, and you look at the price difference, and the school, basically a mirror image school, it's amazing how much it's gone up.
So, is there a, I mean, do you have these listed somewhere, and I apologize if I just, is there, on the priorities tab, I mean, are they, are they broken down between, here's priority zero, here's priority, here's the list, where is that?
This...
This is the biggest, you have that, and the other ones.
So there's the table, so you can sort it, and so we can sort it by priority level.
So do we want to go through, I mean, is there, I mean, obviously, today, we obviously want to get to a point where we say, yeah, we think that, you know, the things that are on the list are nothing that nobody has a big problem with and wants scrapped or whatever. I assume there's some, you know, that there may be some, I don't, but I mean, there's the opportunity to be there for people to try to push things forward, but we need to look at, you know, next year to see, you know, big picture, what do we, you know, what do we have on the list, I mean, when I go, I guess what I'm getting at is, when I look at this thing and start looking out the next two or three years, 23 million looks pretty easy relative to 77, 58, whatever those other numbers were, do we need to start going ahead and getting a feel for what's, you know, what we think are the next, the next step after 2020?
We're doing that as a staff role right now, so I wouldn't recommend doing that necessarily, unless there's big projects in there that you, you just really feel like it's time to defer that project or something that's in there. We've met about 2021 already and continue to work on that, and making reductions, and we'll come back next year to focus heavily on 2020, so certainly, we're always moving projects forward or back, because you have all the projects listed here, we want to be able to have that discussion, particularly today as far as directions, unless you do move projects forward or back, what we'd be looking at is what's on 2020 now, so we do the, look, there's 82 million dollars into project 2021, we know we have to do work on that because we can't borrow that money.
Yeah.
It gets us past our ratio, so we're committed to making sure that works, or finding alternative sources of funding for that, which we're working on now. So I would say focus on 2020 unless there's a project you want to move out or move back.
Where would we go in here to find, here's the list of all the 2020, is that the same place where we're on that CIP summary, where if we just go here to that 2021 column?
2021 column, yeah, we can sort it into 21 column, and...
Yeah, would you, yeah, okay, you sorted it by dollars.
By amount, yeah, that's all 2021, so you can see the bigger projects in there.
Scroll those back to the, yeah, yeah, where you can see what's...
Cherry Lane Interchange, Brickley Road, Rucker Reconstruction. Now, what you have to do is keep in mind, some of this is, some of this is anticipated funding already, and some will be, take Rucker Lane, some have funding that it's committed for development.
But that's our number, though, right?
The 2021.
The 2021 funding is our number, it's...
Right, but the decision was made, and we went and got state money, and so we're committed, that's a possibility in some of these projects, so Chris will lay in on those, so we wouldn't want to move those out, lose your state funding on some of these things, you have to be somewhat cautious in that, but that's what 2021 is looking like. Right now, again, we have to do work on that, we know we can't go out to, I believe it adds up to 82 million, 84, am I right, 84, I think, so we know we got quite a bit of work to do in there to bring back to council for next year before we look at that.
And I think Councilman Lance brings up a good point relating to where are we committing to today, and what I have to finish, and what hanging pressure we may have for that next year, and so forth, but, you know, of the, just my perspective of the 24 million, we've got about 16 of that that's road project.
This time around?
This time around. That feels pretty good, from the standpoint of priorities that the state has placed on those, and, you know, economic opportunities that can be created in conjunction with infrastructure feels really good to me, so, I mean, I don't see anything on there that I'm uncomfortable with at all.
Well, the, you know, the deal about that, too, is that I, I think the idea with that road, with the water drive road, is with the bridge being included in that, and getting the crossover there to, you know, the Verizon, you know, the Apple Mall, you know, is that that's a substantial relief from the case in lanes and the 96 and the 24 exchange, I mean, that should bring substantial relief to that for all the people who want to come to town and not get on the interstate. So, I mean, even though it shows up, kind of looks like it's all done in towns of economic development, it's, it's, it's got substantial benefits for, for transit, for getting from the west side of town to the center of town, right?
Is that an immediate consideration?
I think I remember that, yeah, that's what I, I thought it was, and I thought it was one of the ones that seemed more useful for me, even though there's a lot of pushback from the, from some of the neighbor folks, that when that came through, I mean, it looked to me like that would be a substantial benefit to the community, I mean...
Few people can drive from one side of town to another to stop in case in lane unless you have to stop in case in lane, so it's going to take pressure off of those.
The very obvious part is if you drive Medical Center Parkway, or you drive Old Ford Parkway, or Church Street at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, this will be another pressure valve release option to let some of that traffic go back and forth. Plus to this one is, is this bridge, the way I understand it was designed originally, and I don't think it's changed, is it has no access to the interstate, so therefore it is dedicated purely to local traffic, which will improve the flow of traffic going in and out of there because you, you don't have tourism traffic on it, hopefully, and so I think that's, that's a real plus to that particular project. 8.5 million dollars, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you're building bridges, it disappears quickly, so...
One of the things that was easy to remember about that was getting across the interstate and getting across the river was really our big bottlenecks, you know, and we got this one, and the two down the road, and that's really, is where everybody has to go. So, just to make sure I'm, we're talking about building that thing next year, that road and bridge, is that what, is that what this says?
Yes, we'll start, Chris, we'll start the design with this, and then construction actually start in, I think, 2021, so, and that's the, and that'll be the first bridge, that actually gets us over the river, so that'll go from River Rock over to...
Be here.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the cost of project you got over there, Sean?
Oh, it's...
20 something?
Probably not 20.
Just 20.
If you, if you look, we've identified another project, which is the...
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, the Sherwood House, Rutherford Boulevard Extension, that's a good, that's a good project, and what you're speaking of, that's between Warrior Drive and Rutledge and Warrior there, I'm sorry, Rutherford, Warrior and Rutledge, that's a 25 million dollar project, that'll actually get us on the way up there.
So the things where the interstate and the river, we get the river, in this one, right, the pinch points, or whatever we'll call them, by the railroad, the river, and the interstate, if I remember right, is that kind of what it was like?
That's good.
That's it, man, I listened, Chris.
So, yeah, we've, we've identified the Rutherford project and this project to start over the next four to five years as a relief from those.
Yeah, okay, yep, got it, too. I mean, look, I'll, I'll say it, I mean, I think this is, is critical that we're, you know, we've been saying this for a long time, and at least the last, the last two budgets before this one, is that it's critical that we're, that we're mindful of, particularly this year, as it relates to our capital spending, and frankly, you know, if you kind of look down through what this 23 million dollars represents, yeah, you've got a, you know, let's just say half of it is roads, and the other half is basically the Segal thing, but we also know that we're going to recover some substantial portion, and you can debate whether or not that's, you know, it's going to cost us 100,000 a year, make us 100,000 a year, or whatever, you know, however you want to jockey with the numbers, but it's going to be highly supported by the sponsorship, the tourism dollars, direct and indirect. So, I mean, you know, I think with the, you know, the other 10 million that's out there is almost all devoted to roads that we don't necessarily, you know, and even those roads that we have in here have probably a pretty good payback because of the economic, you know, the economic development side of what that's going to bring along with just the benefit to the citizens, so, I mean, I, I feel good about that and comfortable, and don't expect everybody to understand every bit of that, but that's a pretty doggone good number, it's easy to look at that 20 million and go, oh, man, borrowing 23 million dollars, but that's a pretty, I mean, that's a good investment, and I think the, the new verbiage probably makes me, you know, I agree with that completely.
And I guess part of the funding, what you referred to, is coming from the hotel motel tax, which isn't really truly directly related to taxpayer dollars, so I think a lot of that recovery is, has been well thought out and planned.
So, I'm game for starting on 2021 one day, not today, but, you know, whenever you guys are ready for us to do that, I say the earlier the better, because we've got a lot on that list, and we need to start, you know, whatever, I guess what I would say is just whatever you guys can get us to help us be thinking about organizing these things and our thoughts, you know, it, you know, I mean, we already knew most of what's on the 2020 that we got, you know, we saw it in the budget, right?
Right.
As we go to 2021, it would be, I would just say, for my purposes, it might be helpful to have that before we're in the budget cycle of 2020, you know, of the 2021 budget cycle, so we can be organized and, okay, look, these are the things that we prioritize for this reason or that reason, and everybody has their say as a councilperson, be able to put their, you know, whatever their opinions are on that, but earlier would be better for me, is just, is my point.
Well, we have, we provided the CIP, and we'll keep updating that as we go, so, you know, pay attention, look at those, and then actually have, that is behind it, you know, if you click on the link, it'll take you to the description of...
Detail.
The detail of it.
That's good, by the way, I did look through it already, I just...
So we'll keep that, we'll keep that up today as we work on it, and ship out new ones on a consistent basis, so you'll have that.
And one thing is, whenever y'all get to a point where you start wanting direction from us on that, I mean, I guess kind of where I was going with that in my mind was, we need y'all's input for sure.
Right.
Early. I think maybe, maybe it might be good for us to give you our input, because sometimes, you know, we are thinking of things from a different perspective, you know, not necessarily a road engineer, but we hear what the people say about it, and can at least put that into, you know, into some context, y'all can then take the road engineer piece and figure it out, the guys are smart enough to do it.
Yeah, but probably the next logical time to really dig into that, we can do it any time, you know, any, any request, any time, but maybe our midpoint, our mid-year budget review right after first of the year, we can take a look at next year's CIP and what's on there, because by then, we'll, we'll, as a staff, be able to work through much of it, and get some direction in.
I think Rick's point, rarely is being proactive a bad thing, so I think the sooner we get after it, the better. Is there any?
Just, just one comment about the 7 million dollars that's been served for 2021, I mean, I mean, it just seems like that's just a number, does it, does it, I mean, we're still in compliance with our debt...
For 2021?
In 2021.
No.
That's kind of why I was saying, better for us to prioritize.
But y'all are going down the road.
The ratios is what Bill's concerned about.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And that's the one, but probably, it just seems like a piece, you know, a number on a piece of paper that...
And we'll, and we'll put it in a lot more context, and like I said, I think over the next few months, as we work on things, bringing back alternatives and alternative financing may help answer some of these questions, and that, that may be, you know, a lot more discussion about what we put in there, what we don't, if we have an alternative source of financing for this, other than just straight out debt.
Chris, let me ask about Cherry Lane, I know we talked about Cherry Lane extension and how it's going to help alleviate some of the traffic, where are we at with Sazerac? Have they had any movement?
No, but we do have, we've talked to them about their development plans, and when they're going to come in and are developing that roadway, we have an agreement that gives us a little more visibility on when they're supposed to come back to us and tell us when they're going to start before we sink a lot of money into a roadway, and so we're being cautious of the state funds that are involved in that, and so we don't, we don't lose too much on the state funds, but that's really where we're at, is that, you know, they, they haven't given us a degree of precision right now as to when they're going to start, so...
We're on it.
Because they've got a proportion of recommendations as well.
Adam's drafted amendments to it, so it's a good question, but we'll continue to work.
I'm in consultation with their, or conversation with their attorney, and we have a nearly finalized draft amendment to the agreement, so that, that our commitment with respect to the construction of the roadway is more in line with their current plans, and so to protect the city and make sure that we're getting the, the industrial... and make sure that we're getting the industrial access monies, state industrial access monies for the road.
Yeah, let us, I guess, you know, if we need, whatever degree we need to be involved or helped or whatever, just let us know. But certainly that would be really disappointing.
We've expressed a huge disappointment with it, but it's some corporate decisions.
So I have one other, I have just one other thing off the wall here, and I just have, I mean, I was looking out here and it's not necessarily off what has to do with some of this. Maybe, maybe it takes a little money to do it, but I've had a couple of conversations with this. We've had a lot of conversations about Asbury Lane. And it sort of is one of those things, and I know this isn't fair as a staff because they're constantly having to deal with this stuff, but it seems like for us, it's one of those things that gets hot for a minute and then we forget about it for a year and then it gets hot for a minute and then we forget about it. But that's been something that's been on the list for me for a really long time. If I, I mean, I know there's no perfect answer. And I know one of the things, you know, I knew there was an article in the paper that had the drawing as far as what was going to happen right through here. And, you know, I have my opinions. Everybody's got their opinions on it. And certainly I'm not a road engineer, but you know, I will tell you that I saw, what brought this to my mind really was that I saw, I guess in the planning commission's agenda or something, or the minutes, something about a new, a new development or ours or somebody's minutes, that there was a new development coming out here at the corner of Asbury Lane, Asbury Road. And it just kind of got me back into thinking about this as far as what could be done. And look, this is one of those things that not being a road engineer has to come into play here, okay? But just from listening to other people is what some possible suggestions might be. You know, I've got an idea of what I think this Conference Center Boulevard should look like. And, you know, everybody can have their thing with that. But at least for like a temporary solution for Asbury, I mean, I looked at, I saw that on the development side. And I, you know, my initial thought is until that gets done, until something is out there that makes me feel better about people pulling out there in front of that traffic, you know, without fearing their life. I mean, and look, this is one of those, you know, we all hear traffic and we get a little calloused about the word traffic because everybody brings it up every time anything ever happens. But that spot right there is real, you know? To me, I look at that and the problem is definitely real. It's not, I just don't want four more cars passing by my house, you know? And so whether we could do a synchronized third light, I know that's probably, you know, the natural reaction is bad about that, but you know, if we could synchronize a light like that, like we did back here at Warren maybe, you know, for the fire department, I don't know, but can we look, can we put that kind of maybe back up on the list to try to see if we can get some kind of temporary solution, whether that be a temporary light or get this thing moving on what we're going to do with Conference Center Drive. And I mean, I bring it up in terms of CIP here. I mean, this is, it may be important enough to get it prioritized.
I think what you're probably referring to was we recently, the planning commission had a amendment to a planned unit development. And.
I think so.
And it wasn't a new project. It was a project that was already proposed.
I just saw Asbury and Asbury.
Mr. Olson.
Certainly on Asbury Lane, Asbury Road, we are seeing some development pressures. But I would tell you, we have very few city residents actually using that intersection today because the plans that have been approved and developed aren't just now being put on the market for residents. So.
It's coming, right?
It is coming, but what I would say is that, and I hate to use this phrase, but I want to use it because it's correct, we have inherited that particular intersection and that particular issue without it being city residents using the roadway. We do look, certainly we do want to look at the impacts of traffic at the local intersections and then at the more regional intersections. This is a regional intersection for us. And based on that, we had looked at a major transportation plan. We've done a limited transportation planning study to look at some alternatives. I think we shared some of those results with you if we have and we can. I think Mr. Griffith and I are hearing your concerns, and so we'll look for opportunities to move that one forward.
Council needs, you know, I'm not, you know, don't call any kind of vote, I'm just going to say I'd like for you to hear it from other council members if it's important to other people and you can deal with that aside from today. But I guess, you know, look, yeah, we inherited it, but we also created it. I mean, man, it's a bike and Asbury Lane is a totally different thing than Medical Center Parkway.
You know, there are two elements to this one. There's a roadway construction element that's coming out of a major transportation plan and priorities, but there's also a congestion hotspot. What we're dealing with today is a congestion hotspot issue. One of the potential solutions to that congestion hotspot issue is to work the plan. We may not be able to work the plan, so your point's well taken, that if we can't work the major transportation plan for timing, for budget, for cooperation with the property owners, whatever the issues, we've got to be maybe a little more creative and then look for some even temporary solutions or temporary mitigation to help with the congestion hotspot.
And on the hotspot situation, it's a deal that you don't want to create a situation where we've got a, like we've got at Oakport Parkway where you turn off onto Walmart and Air Bread and that type of thing. Once you build it, it's hard to get rid of it because they learn to rely on it. And I'd rather just get it right the first time personally than to put something in that's hodgepodge and then have to live with it forever. And so.
We like to say in our, in our industry, we're looking at twenty to fifty-year decisions because a lot of the decisions that were made twenty, thirty years ago, we're now trying to maybe deal with those, correct them, modify them, mitigate them. And so we didn't need the forward thinking. I want to be smart with our spending. Spending money on a temporary solution that we might tear out in three or four years, look at that and go, is that the right thing to do? I think, I think what staff will say to you is we, we hear you ringing the bell, let us, let us work to work with it and raise the potential options back.
And from the city resident standpoint, moving to Asbury Road or Asbury Lane right now and complaining about the conditions on that intersection, so like we have buying property next to the dump today and complaining tomorrow about the smell. I mean, the condition exists when the city residents are getting there. And so those people are going to pay for it as far as taxpayers are concerned. It's a realistic situation that it can be addressed properly, I think, on the front end as far as for our city residents. And it's when we come up with a solution, I think, will be beneficial to the county residents as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any more questions or comments on the community investment program? You've got directions?
Thank you.
Is there any motion or anything that's required or needs?
Now we have the directions. We'll go forward and do the rest of the work.
Okay, I sent you a lengthy list of other business things we were going to discuss today. So, but this meeting's running kind of long, so I think we'll leave those off for now.
Maybe.
Is there any other business to come for us today?
I'll just mention that we meet on the twenty-second and then have our retreat on the twenty-eighth. So meetings coming up.
So tomorrow night's meeting is canceled?
Yes, no meeting tomorrow night. Twenty-second is our next one. Thank you.
Any other business? Any announcements? Thank you all for coming. Have a great afternoon. Good morning, Chris.